Counsel, you ready?
Yeah.
Please stand for prayer, principal agents. Our Lord and our God, we humbly bow before you this evening. We thank you, Lord, for the opportunities that you have given us to meet here and do the business of the city. Pray that every word cast and every vote cast and every word spoken will be pleasing unto you. We also ask for a special prayer. That you lay your healing hand upon our sick and our shut end. You make them comfort in their time of need. We also know that we've, within our employees' families, we've lost loved ones. We pray that you be with them and comfort them. These things are prayed in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Court call roll.
Phillips.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Abrams.
Here.
Kettle.
Citizens comments. We start the meeting off with the citizens' comment period, followed by one towards the end of the meeting. Any citizen wish to address counsel at this time? Do you want to read minutes first, huh? Can you tell them on the break? I don't know my glasses.
Okay, let's time out.
Time out, okay. Reading and disposition of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Mayor, make a motion to accept the minutes as presented from the previous meeting of March 26th.
Second.
Motion by Hart, second, and by Wright to accept the minutes as presented. Questions or comments? Attorney General, court call roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Abrams.
Right.
Kettle.
Yes.
When it's approved as presented. That's automatic. Okay, now we'll do the citizens' comments. Thank you. Mr. Alcorn, would you please give us your address?
515 Royal Oak Circle.
Thank you.
I got my nose checked, Alcorn. If I may, Mayor, two topics?
Yes.
Okay. First, I'd like to kind of express my displeasure with the Rita program, so it's on record. We've never had any issues with the tax structure with Sebring or paying our taxes, but Rita's created a hiccup. I think it's worth noting. Previously, when you filed the Sebring return, you know you had four online items to put in your income. Everything was combined. It all balanced out whether you paid or you were refunded. According to Rita, in our case, we have four sources of income as a joint return. Because in the past, we knew my three types of income, no withholdings were withheld. Thus, we've taken the burden to my wife's income to take out extra taxes to cover such. According to Rita, I got red flagged, my return was kicked out, and I can't file a return. We have to ask for the refund. Her withholding exceeded to 2% Sebring tax. Because of that, they're saying we have to get a refund for her, file for a refund, and then actually pay the bill on my three incomes for taxes. It cannot all be clustered into one unit as previously been able to do with Sebring. I hope I explained that okay.
I understand.
And we also.
So with that, you know, I'm kind of in a burden, so now, when it comes back here at the end of the year, they're going to say, "I'm going to estimate a taxes and have to pay quarterly." Being I work part-time, part-time work is based seasonally, and certain circumstances, I have miscellaneous income this time, it's going to be well inflated that come next year, I will get a super return based on the estimated prepayments that I'm going to have to make. Because this is not all blended together like it's always been done previously. So I just want.
You can't, they're telling you that you can't file a joint return only claiming one individual on the income tax.
They kicked mine back because I not only paid my 2%, I picked up enough additional to pay his 2% on everything.
Okay. So they're saying basically the return has to be filed as a refund on her W-2, and then they're going to adjust the return and file a bill back to me to pay on the three items. They're saying their system has to take each W-2 separately.
We'll check.
So I'll get three bills from the sounds.
There's some things I don't know that we explained to the public well enough. And it's not the Rita system, but it could be that this House Bill 42, the income tax form that Rita has been filling out follows it.
Okay.
Now, it might be state law now, so we're going to have to check with Rita and see where this goes. We might be able to help you, we may not be able to help you.
Well, I understand we're down at crunch time, too, for deadlines, but, you know, I just, I just want to, on record, be aware that, you know.
Well, we need to know that.
It could be a unique situation, too.
Well, I could tell you, when I was still working, my wife and I did the same thing as you've previously done.
We've been through those three years, and with him working for the city last year, that put a big burden, so I was really taking a lot of money out per pay, and I'm still taking money out, and we're going to be in the same boat next year. I didn't real, I didn't know Rita was going to do this.
Couldn't realize that either.
What we could do is if you want to meet tomorrow, or call me, I'll go over it with her tomorrow, kind of outline what you told me tonight, see if we can get all of Rita.
Okay, I understand that. I tried to talk to Maple today, and she said because of the contract, she's not allowed to discuss or help me with my forms.
Well, that's a form, but not a process, so.
But I appreciate it. If this is the policy of Rita's, Rita is going to have to accept our policies. They're being paid to administer our income tax. They're not paying them to administer their income tax.
Well, I understand, and that's why I wanted to come and put it on record, and, you know, there is a little hiccup there that, you know, the blending, I think the blending would help everybody.
The state has changed all the income tax filing forms and everything else that we have to use, so if, I'm surprised, we haven't heard word about this, because this is the first complaint that I've heard of. So I figure there's probably more out there.
Okay, I would say so. Second thing for consideration, I know you're discussing or been discussing a central garbage contract. My concern there is that when we moved into Sebring, Bill can attest that we're on a dead-end road, and I think the ordinances or there's laws that said there should have been a cul-de-sac built, and there's just no way for trucks to turn around down there. We specifically contracted our garbage with Lewis &amp; Sons at that time because they used a very small truck. And they agreed to use a small truck, knowing that the road base down there at that time was not worth anything, the road wasn't even paved at the time, and they agreed a small truck. Lewis then sold out to what is now Kimball. When they sold out, I got concerned. I actually talked to Mr. Lewis himself, and he guaranteed me with the Kimball organization, whoever was he before that, they would still guarantee me a small truck down there, and they have honored that. So when you're considering your contract, I think there needs to be, hopefully, you would consider a stipulation or some restrictions in there that if you have restricted areas in town, like our street is, that you require that contract and that company to bring you a small truck. To save your roads, to save my driveway and turnaround, and even now, we see city trucks come to the end of the dead end and back up into other private driveways on down the road, which I don't think is proper, but, you know, they, they're not complaining, so I can't say anything. But it's just specifically, we did small trucks because of that situation. I hope you would consider such.
Mayor, ma'am?
Yes.
The committee and I, we've discussed trash aggregation a couple times. One of the things, one of the provisions we're looking at in bid specifications, we'll get to that point, is special circumstances, special exemptions, so there will be clauses to address special cases in the contract specs. I understand that the committee will probably be looking at that in the next thirty days or so to kind of fine tune it, so I did want to assure you that those type of things are going to be in there, but I'm glad you let us know that that's the case, so definitely we'll look at that.
Thank you. You understand why we're considering getting some prices on aggregation of trash, though?
Well, yes and no. I mean, I hope in the long run, overall, it would save money.
Well, I hope that each saves each residence money, and number two, we found five garbage trucks, companies in town on five different days tearing up the streets and the alleys.
Yeah, I've heard some of the discussion, that's why I was concerned, knowing you're concerned about the bigger trucks, but then, did you even think of the little trucks that, you know, back in there? I, I was just saying, I see three different companies coming down Royal Oak.
Correct.
You know, and they're, one, um, backs all the way down to the mailboxes, and he played barricade up there when they cleaned out the ditch last week, so I don't know where they're turning around now. They take black all the way down there, usually pulled in that dirt area, so.
And they're dropping three axles now, too. Not just two. They're dropping a third axle, and they're carrying 60,000 pounds.
Yeah, I understand, and that's why I wanted to bring up about this small truck, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
So good.
Mr. Mayor, the other thing is, my research so far, and this will come up later, is that that is going to have to go on the ballot regardless, so you'll get a chance to vote on it yourself.
Turn to garbage, then. Anybody else under citizens' comments? Yes, ma'am.
Priscilla Alcorn, 515 Royal Oak Circle. He brought up a point which kind of hit me about the trucks and stuff coming back to where we're at. Since it is a dead-end street, our driveway's already been damaged and needs repaired from the time we first put it in, and there was no place for the trucks to turn around. I'm not sure exactly what year we actually got a road paved back there, but no turnaround was made. And last year, the snowplow pretty much tore up what little bit of road we had back there. It's nothing but dirt and mud and potholes. So it would literally have to be completely stripped down and done again because you can't put pavement or fill coal patch, whatever, into a mud hole when there's dirt underneath it and no, nothing for it to adhere to. So I know that you, cities are a little stripped down, short on money, and have to watch where you pave things, but if you consider paving, Royal Oak Circle would really be a good street to invest some money in back there, because it's just, like I said, mud, not a road.
Would you go down there tomorrow, if you have time, and see if we can get them out of the mud, at least for now, until we can get in there and do something with it?
Sometimes what we can do is, if it's not actually for a formal paving job like we're going to be doing this month with California Avenue, Bill does a great job on, it's like a thin overlay, smooth it out.
Even the gravel, even just, just some gravel back there, so you're not driving through mud, and that's fine with me, and anything to help at this point in time?
You do want us to help out there?
Thank you.
And you also hear citizens' comments? Reading and referring of communications and petitions. Any petitions to be presented to counsel this evening? Under communications, the only thing I have is, on council, you've got a rather large pack of stuff from First Energy announcing that First Energy Solutions and their operating company have filed for voluntary Chapter 11 restructuring. I've already talked to our contact there, and they said it would not affect the quality of service for Sebring at all, and they would be honoring the contract, the aggregation contract to the deadline of it, for sure. Now, if you want to read all this stuff about how you file for Chapter 11, have a go at it. But you just want to, I know it's going to be out in newspapers and stuff here shortly. We have municipalities' aggregation contracts with them now, to be aware that it's not going to interrupt service. Any else under reading the communications? For the council committees and council representatives, sign finance. Mr. Hart?
Yes, Mayor. The finance committee did meet on April 4th. Before I go into that report, I'd like to make a motion authorizing the village manager to pay bills when funds become available for checks dated from 3/24/2018 through 4/6/2018 in the amount of $55,784.82.
Second.
Motion by Hart, second, and by Wright to pay bills when funds become available. Questions or comments?
Mayor, any questions or comments on the bills? The following bills are listed as outstanding, and they are: $2,294.50 to Central Allied for hot mix and cold mix at the service department; $7,352.94 to Columbia Gas of Ohio for heating; $2,275 to a comp management group for enrollment into Bureau of Workers' Comp; and $12,910.75 to Ohio Edison for electricity; $4,645.78 to Sebring Tire Springer's Towing for cruiser maintenance, also worked on vehicles at the service department; $4,250 to W.E. Quicksal and Associates for the California Avenue paving project; and $2,144.09 to Huntington Bank for miscellaneous purchases on the credit card. Mayor, those are listed, the outstanding bills for this pay period.
Any questions or comments? Attorney General, court call roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Abrams.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mayor, also, as I stated, we did meet, the finance committee met here in council chambers. All members were in attendance, including Mayor Mike Pinkerton, village administrator Rick Giroux, village solicitor Teresa Tolson, and council member Samantha Phillips. We went over some old business. Manager was asked to check with the fire chief regarding the sale of Circumless Accortment from the fire department from ordinance 18-2017, and that was on October 9th of 2017. At this point, I haven't heard what was sold or anything on that.
Yeah, councilman, I could talk to Chief Anderson, and he indicated that the equipment's still on site, and he has not done anything on the surplus. I told him if he wanted to expedite that, he'd get ahold of me and Malia, and we would begin the process.
Okay.
So it's still on site.
Okay, so the ordinance would stand as, as it is, or do we draw a new ordinance for that?
I think it would still be valid.
Okay. Okay, also, committee needs to upgrade the payroll to reflect ordinance 133-14, whereas police officers are compensated one and one-half times their pay rate for attending court proceedings with a minimum of two hours. Manager also asked committee to consider additional funding of $25,000 for the California Avenue paving project, and this would be for the addition of so many inches of asphalt that would bring it up to two and one-half, and the committee feels that this is good for the project and also extends the life of the road. The committee also looked at the possibility of going with a single trash carrier. Note, the committee will meet again to finalize all requirements to go to bid, and also the solicitor was to check and advise as to whether a referendum is needed, and she answered that. Monthly billing was also revisited, along with much discussion. Chairman brought information to review. Solicitor requests that we reach out to Smartville Incorporated to get more information and suggestions on moving forward, and this will also be evaluated on a cost basis. Under new business, the manager brought forth capital improvement items, one being the service department needs utility van approximate costs. Now, I just put this down at $27,000. I hear it might be a little less, and a funding portion, possibly $22,000 from the wastewater. Backhoe is also needed for the service department. Unit is old, does not have a lot of power, according to Mr. Sanner. Approximate cost, $150,000, and we look at a five-year loan at $30,000 a year. Police Department requests committee to look into replacing unit 302, as it has 198,000 miles and is wearing down. Manager advised that we budgeted 20K for a used one, and the question was asked if we could hold off on the purchase and look and see how many vehicles on inventory that we currently have and use. And then manager also gave the committee a list of the 2018 budget that included a 13.5% increase because of health care increases, and this should clear up any fund balances that are in the negative. And lastly, with House Bill 49 changes, we need to look at our tax ordinance to be readjusted. And that was all I had, Mayor, for that.
And Mr. Hart, officially unput, the review of the income tax ordinance committee with the solicitor.
I need the original one. Can, Malia, can you send me an electronic copy of that?
Of the income tax?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to ask you earlier.
And Maple has the changes for 49?
I have the changes I got from you.
Okay, well, I will double-check with Malia to make sure that she doesn't have anything else.
All right.
Any else, Mr. Hart?
No, Mayor. Does Dave or Marvin have anything to add to that?
Nothing at this time.
Very thorough.
Well, thank you. Okay. Let me see, Mr. Abrams?
Pardon me?
May I read your report?
On which, I didn't, I didn't catch you.
Legislative?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Capital improvement, Ms. Phillips?
No meeting, but we have, we are going to meet on Tuesday, April 17th, at 4:30 in council chambers to discuss paving projects, so we'll add that to the list, the discuss.
4:30, 17?
17, Tuesday the 17th at 4:30. And just a quick update on the website. I have been speaking with the new web host. Something I had talked to Teresa briefly about was, they're looking for new high-res pictures for the website. The one that we have, the website we have currently doesn't have that. I don't know that we have any anywhere, so I had asked her about possibly asking the public to submit it, and then I had asked her for like a photo release. If we wanted, I wanted to ask your opinion on that, to see what you guys thought about maybe getting some nice pictures from the community to put on the website. The banner, the homepage has a scrolling image, so that's just an option. I figured you would have some.
Well, I can take, if you have something specific.
Okay, but I just thought maybe if we want to open it up, we can all, that way we can keep it maybe fresh and change it every so often, so that was just an option. But if you're okay, Teresa's going to work on the photo release for that, and then we'll...
I've got the plan, Sam.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hart? Did you get the CD that was produced quite a while ago? I mean, it had to been back about 2008. We had a guy from...
I have a copy somewhere.
Oh, I didn't know they had a copy.
There's a copy of, I think he worked for WSOS and Alliance on a radio station, and he came down here and he did a full view of Sebring.
We have a copy.
Yeah, I have one of those.
I just thought that might be a nice way to get the community involved and get some good pictures, so if you're okay with that, I'll have, I'll get that going, but the website's moving along, so.
Very good.
Do we want to wait for May Flowers and...
Yeah, I mean, we can't, but I'm just, people may have pictures from last summer or whatever, it just, they don't have to go out and take them. If they have good pictures, then we'll use them, so.
Well, you got a couple thousand, Larry?
No.
At least a couple hundred.
My kid's in most of mine, so I don't want to...
I got some pictures this weekend, though, to share.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Annexation and Business and Development, Mr. Kettle? No meeting, Mayor. Service Maintenance, Mr. Wright?
No meeting, Mayor, but we are going to set one up here in the next couple weeks. I have the rental information I've received from the manager and also from the solicitor, so I'll get with them and get their schedules in the committee, and we'll, we'll get something rolling on that here. Hopefully get that reduced into some sort of ordinance form by maybe end of next month, beginning of June.
Okay. And Safety, Mr. Flowers?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Safety did meet on April 4th at 4:30 PM. All committee members were present, along with Mayor Pinkerton and Village Manager Giroux. We had two items to discuss, two dispatching contracts, one for Craig Beach Fire and one for Smith Township Police. Committee agreed that we would, as per the request from Craig Beach, we will extend their contract to five years instead of three, and we will keep the cost the same for all five years at $2,400 per year. Smith Township Police will remain a three-year contract, and we will hold their current cost at $15,600 per year for the three-year contract, and we will reevaluate it at the end of the contract. Letters have been sent to both entities. Once they agree, we will put these on the agenda.
Very good.
We adjourn at 4:45.
Anyone else under Safety?
I have nothing.
Okay. Park Recreation, Mr. Flowers?
They did not have a meeting, however, they have a meeting this Thursday, 7 o'clock.
Very good. Planning and zoning, Mr. Abrams?
They met Thursday the 5th. All but one member was present, and they voted to reorganize, kept it the same as it was, and then voted to approve three separate replating properties. The brief 20-minute meeting.
Okay. Civil Service, Ms. Phillips?
Civil Service did not have a meeting, but they did administer the patrolman exam this past Saturday. They had five applicants take that, so the scores were to be posted today, so.
Okay, that was cool.
Okay.
Veterans Memorial, Mr. Wright?
Veterans Memorial hasn't met, but they are meeting this Wednesday at 6:30 at the American Legion.
Very good. Retention Committee is myself, the solicitor, the manager, and Mr. Bill Melzer is an interested citizen. We did have a meeting. We did go over requests from Police Department, Park Recreation, and Fire Department? Yes. Fire Department. We required some changes on, just minor changes on some of them, and we're going to hopefully finalize that tomorrow morning at 10:00 AM. And that way we can move forward with our paper shredding, too. You can announce that this evening?
Malia, where are we at? I think we... Yeah, we're ready. We've got the date set, and we've got both the contract ready.
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, it's going to be, let me look, I don't want to make a mistake.
I think it was June 26th.
Mm-mm. I think it's, it's going to be on a Saturday, June 23rd, from 10 to 1. That was the committee's wishes to have from 10 to 1. It's going to be through Shred It. We used Nero Shred last time. They went out of business and was bought by Shred It, and they're a national company, and they'll do the same thing. They'll come on site, and we'll open it up to the public, and I guess council just needs to know, let us know how they want to advertise or what they want us to do to let the people know.
I would say you get it out at least three weeks prior, so that people have time to gather up what they want to throw.
We're getting it out right now, the press is setting right now.
That's fine. Just ask them, and we want to do it.
Right. Just some options of what you want to do, you know? Get a couple, maybe a couple briefs in the paper about it.
It's going to be here.
Okay.
I'm throwing all my council stuff in.
10 to 1.
10 to 1.
10 to 1.
I'll invite, bring your shreddable stuff in, have it shredded.
We'll be right back.
Does that include, Malia? Can they bring CDs and that thing?
No.
So it's all in paper?
Papers, yeah, files and stuff like that, you know.
Then they don't have to remove paper clips and staples and none of that stuff?
Well, staples will shred, yeah, staples will shred. There'll be a couple of us from City Hall, a couple from the service department, and then there's just the guy from the company, so we kind of need police to guide the cars and kind of like the same thing we did a few years ago.
That doesn't, that doesn't include commercial, does it? Does it?
Gets it out of town.
That's, that's the whole issue.
No, not you.
Get the junk out of town.
Not you. And that's also only for Sebring residents, the last one we did ask.
Right, 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 cleanup, right?
It is for Sebring residents.
Only.
They will ask, he asks for identification.
Okay.
Do we have to pay by the tonnage?
Mm-hmm.
Anything else under reported council committees and council representatives? Mr. Manager, or is your...
Mr. Mayor, a couple of these items were already covered. I did want to save it. Excuse me. Engineers and staff and I met with Central Allied for the California resurfacing project for the plan, and this does go with Mr. Hart's committee meeting information. The original plan called for 1.75 inches of an intermediate court asphalt, and then 1.25 inches of surface course. So since the bids came in solo, and this kind of expands on the reason for the request, we decided to increase the intermediate course from 1.75 to 1 1/2 inches, primarily because that particular road gets a lot of truck traffic, and of course, as Mr. Hart stated, it does expand the life of the road. I do want everybody to keep in mind that 54% of that cost increase and the grant as well, is 54% is grant funding, so that $25,000 is really about 11 out of our pocket. The original budget was... The original budget was two hundred eighty-one thousand for the project, council approved originally in the contract, hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents. There's legislation before you tonight, and the amount of hundred ninety-three thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and sixty cents, and that's for, to move forward, and talking to the contractor engineer, and be able to do it this month, so it should be anytime, hopefully when weather breaks. As a part of the transfers and appropriations package that I went over in the Finance Committee, which should be before council next session, I allocated twenty-five hundred, twenty-five hundred dollars toward the website development project that Councilwoman Phillips is working on. The original contract was eighteen hundred three dollars, but I thought it might be prudent to add a little extra money, just in case there was unanticipated costs, or anticipated costs as we move forward, so I'll be sure she had enough money for her project. Reserve Officer Elizabeth Huey has been appointed as a part-time dispatcher for the Police Department, that was effective March twenty-seventh. Pam Dixon, the dispatcher's training nurse, so we have adequate backup dispatching personnel. I asked Chief Harris for the status update on the property at one twenty-sixth East Oregon. I sort of forwarded this report to council earlier. The chief advised that the county renewed the food license and had no issues about approving the beer license for Sunday sale, so I know there was questions from council members on that previously, and I wanted to follow up on that. I had a five, it was already gone over, and so is six. I met with the US EPA and OEPAs representatives, informed us, it was with our engineer, Brett Norton, from Quicksaw, was present, including teleconferencing with the Northeast Division Office reps. After lengthy PowerPoint presentation, which lasted most of the day, they discussed our system, the monitoring data, the actions taken, the equipment installed, and it looks like they're changing the tunnel, as far as the corrosion control study. It was decided that the US EPA data will be used and accepted by EPA to complete the corrosion control study. The data and supplemental information presented by US EPA clearly showed that Sebring was in, was operating well within parameters and meeting all expectations. The data from EPA, EPA also indicated at that meeting to everyone present that they were very favorable to Sebring's efforts and system status, so in good shape. Darren Lidle, he was the one who confirmed this office, we've been working with him pretty closely, and I don't want to, he's done a great job. The meeting ended, and that's something that we've been looking forward to discussing for months, if not a year, that the corrosion control study should be approved by EPA at the senior level staffing in thirty days. This will be the eighth submission, you know, we did mention at the meeting that we made seven, seven different presentations based on their own requirements, and they rejected their own requirements, so, so within thirty days, it will be kicked up to EPA Director Butler for final approval. I think it may be about thirty-day process for that, and then the EPA acknowledged that once that approval is done, they are willing to waive orders four through seven for the next week testing. So, I think the, this should all be wrapped up by July, and by virtue of having that happen, that will save us about fifty thousand dollars of the budget and additional testing fees, so progress, I'm very glad to report that, it was a really important meeting last week. There's a lengthy breakdown on updates from superintendent Hatton regarding wastewater operations, we did have some high-rain events, but he's handled it quite well, some air maintenance issues, I wanna give Malia kudos for doing a good job in sorting that out. I know you've been overwhelmed with high and low problemlessly, so good work. Larry Baxter, Ohio RCap, this is, of course, also wrapped in with the EPA project, this is regarding the plant, asset management plan, which is required by October. He's wrapping that up, he's gonna be contacting staff here shortly, and gather additional information there, we got the management data from my office, and the, the submission should be within the next three weeks. They also, he also sent me a new workforce tool, which we received from the US EPA, there's some great information in there on operations, so I'll forward that to the department shortly. Much of that data is exactly for the map that OEPAs looking for, so excellent progress is making, is being made, and we'll get that plan, if, once that plan's submitted, and council members want a copy of it, I'm sure you want to enjoy the light reading, but it's finally done, so. Chief Harris reports that Sebring Police Department has been selected to receive a drug, a drop box for, for free from the state board of pharmacy. This is a secured mailbox-style disposable unit. Drop box will be permanently located inside where individuals can walk in and deposit their unwanted and expired medicine, excuse me, medicine safely. The use of the drop box has shown to reduce drug problems in the communities. I'm getting that, and I think hopefully that will, I'll be interested to see if there is a reduction in that, so good work, Chief. Chief Harris also reports that in the month of March, Sebring had a twenty-five percent decrease in theft reports compared to the same month last year, and there have been no reported car break-ins for the same period. Additionally, our code officer handled an additional fifteen new trash and junk vehicle complaints. Chief Harris will be attending a seminar on April tenth for, to, to be brought up to speed on twenty-eight new administrative rules that are scheduled to be in effect on April twenty-third for illegal gambling establishments posing as legitimate offenders, so. I did contact, as a follow-up on the Royal China, I've got a little bit of information here, did contact Wednesday, Wednesday Scalozi, she's the Environmental Enforcement Section of the Attorney General's Office. I asked or tried to get ahold of her regarding the status of the Royal China property, and what further options there may be from the state to, to rectify that. I've not heard a response from her, but I will continue to solicit information. However, I was advised this afternoon by Councilwoman Phillips, who heard from a local business owner that the county treasurer has now listed the Royal China property on his foreclosure list, and will sell it at auction at some time in the future. Our research this afternoon after we heard that is, indicates that a sold tax lien is in foreclosure for the largest of the parcels. The assessed value of the lot, or fair market value of the lot, was thirty-seven thousand and fifty-two dollars, and the taxes due are fifty-eight thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars, so that tells me that since the, the liens have exceeded the fair market value that they would be seized, we are checking on the balance of the parcels, some research that Malia did also this afternoon indicates that some of the other parcels are in the same situation, so looks like some positive progress. I think a lot of that also is initiated by our efforts in two thousand and fifteen moving forward with Attorney General's and EPA to start putting pressure on the cleanup, so I think we've seen some fruit, I mean, I know it was adjudicated at the time. I think that might be a subject for the appropriate council committee to maybe consider what options are if the property does change hands, and what we're interested to, to do or assist. So I know the brown folks grants are still out there, but I think when this comes to some sort of fruition, that we might be able to assist to actually make it happen, I'm kind of excited about it, and I appreciate that, so, 'cause I didn't hear any state or, uh, um, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my, my home report.
In regards to the foreclosure of the Royal China property by the county for taxes, Madam Solicitor, we are now aware of a parcel land that's been sold over there, but it's not a true parcel. The previous or the current owner sold land by meets and bounds, across property lines, and didn't have it replatted, and I think according to our ordinance, the title that the new owner has is not valid.
Do you have all that information that I can take and look at?
We got part of it.
Yeah, I'd have to research it again, it's been a while.
Well, whatever you do now, that I can look at.
Well, we have it.
If that, if that parcel, the mayor is indicating has been apparently resold, and that's still on the county's, you know, we find out that's on the county foreclosure list, I mean...
That's the one, that's the one that's delinquent.
Yeah, you would think that would negate the sale, obviously, it's, it's not a legal sale, it hasn't been done right.
We don't have any standing to contest the sale itself as a legal or illegal sale, but they should've had it replatted, everything in Mahoning County that gets transferred gets replatted.
The county should not have accepted it without going through our planning and zoning commission, and they did.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's gonna record it?
It's been recorded.
Has it?
I believe so. And it's the one that's foreclosed, it's the one that has the foreclosure on it now separate from the rest of the parcels.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, some of the managers' report?
I got a question.
Okay.
Could, could we maybe get the lighting fixed in this room?
You know...
Cause on, no?
You know, we have replaced the lights and the ballast on several occasions, I, I, I mean, every time that we've had a meeting, whether it's a council meeting or some other meeting in the room, and they wink out, and the ballasts fail, we have them replaced, and I don't know, maybe we'll just, I'll get an electrician in here and figure that.
We maybe get an electrician, can we even put new lights in the building?
Yeah, I think that's the only, I mean, we've done it in-house on numerous occasions, and the ballasts just keep failing, I think that's, it might be a short or something, so.
I mean, can we afford it?
Yeah, we can go with that, leave it. Okay, I'll take care of it.
We had to change the existing ballast, and go to the green ballast.
I talked to the...
Environmentally, and buy the special bulbs, and they don't last, nothing.
All right, why don't we, I don't know about the rest of the building, but I think with this here, it needs replaced.
Yeah, no, I'll get, I'll get an electrician in here, we'll take a look at it, and check the system, and then replace any additional ballast. I think the lights and the rest of the building are okay, it just has a tendency to wink out in here, I don't know, especially in this section here.
Okay, moving right along, a couple of questions. Okay.
Can I ask a couple more questions?
Yeah, go ahead.
Maybe, when is our dispatchers gonna go with EMD training?
My last information, talking to Pam Dixon, was that the, the state was going to advise us, the nine-one-one authority was going to advise us when that training was gonna be held, the training will be free to our dispatchers, and we have not been noticed as of this date, so as soon as we get a notice or a formal notification that what it is, and how often those, those training sessions will be, we'll send our dispatchers in a rotation.
We don't know when they're gonna go?
No, we haven't gotten anything from them yet.
A month ago, I requested for some literature.
From the Fire Chief?
No, from you.
What was that regarding?
I, I, I wrote it, I requested some information.
What was he...
About the inspections, and you wrote this back?
I can't see it.
It's a month ago.
Okay, but what's...
Is there anything down the line that I might be gonna get this?
What's it regarding?
Huh?
What's it regarding?
Dear Manager, I am requesting a copy of all inspections that Brian Bailey has done in our village and township. I've given you the list for you to get the full copies. I hope it didn't take too long, thank you, Jim Kennel. And you wrote back, Council McKennel, you, you requested for this information was given to Fire Chief Anderson, and I can't read the rest of it.
Yeah, I think after I received that, I put a copy of that, the exact same thing that you had, and I asked Fire Chief Anderson to follow up and provide you with the information. So I was under the assumption at this point that he had, and obviously if you have not received it, I will ask Chief Anderson to make sure that you get it as soon as...
You think it's gonna take another month for me to get this?
Oh, I have to ask Chief Anderson.
Huh?
I'll ask Chief Anderson if it'll take another month.
I appreciate a little more service.
Well, I asked Chief Anderson, I asked Chief Anderson, within a few days, or the very next day, that you gave that to me, so I was under the assumption that you received it, since this is the first I've heard that you have not, I am more than happy to get ahold of Chief Anderson first thing tomorrow, and ask him to answer about your request.
Mr. Mayor, if, if this information's being requested for some committee purpose, then I guess it would go to the manager. If it's a public records request, they go to the clerk, and then the clerk gets public records requests, so if these are for your personal edification or use or whatever, then you would make a public records request to the clerk. If they're for some council purpose, some, something you need in your committee...
I might have been understanding, council, you're supposed to go through the manager, I, I would like to have some information, so I went through the manager a month ago, and I haven't received anything yet.
I understand the situation, I'm just saying, if it's a public records request, that's you as a person, a member of the community, those go to the clerk.
I go to the clerk.
If it's for purposes of a committee, I would think that we would have some committee report here stating that we've asked for this information. Did I know, did I make sense?
No, I mean, after my take, I responded to the councilman's request as soon as I got it, and I gave it to Chief Anderson, and...
But that request is a public records request, unless it's from a committee.
I, I made it from, and I don't wanna start a bruhaha.
Chief, council decide that, thank you for your input.
I, I don't wanna start a bruhaha, I'm just saying that if, if the request is for some personal purpose, then you need to make a public records request to Malia as the clerk of council, of, of the village, and then she has a certain amount of time to get that information from wherever it is. But if it's for a committee purpose, I think it's appropriate to come in under your committee report and say that the committee wants this information. So I guess the question is...
Well, I've asked the manager, and it got no result.
We all understand that.
So I guess I'll go to Malia, right?
If it's for you personally, yes, it would go to Malia, and it would not be discussed here in council.
Well, I, I'm just asking, where's that, that's all.
And that would be a public records request, in my opinion.
Okay. Anything else?
One more, yeah, we're gonna sit down as a group and go over his evaluation with him, is this correct?
The offer was extended.
What?
The offer was extended, and the manager declined.
Oh, he declined? All council realize that?
I didn't realize that, I didn't really realize it was a offer.
Okay, anything else?
It really wasn't an offer, Mayor, maybe there was a miscommunication there, I, I don't think it really was a offer, I think it was a...
Suggestion.
You were gonna go over his review with him, which you did, and then council was going to provide him with a list of priorities of stuff we wanted him to handle, which you did.
Right, but I don't think we were gonna review, go over his reviews with...
No, I, I, no.
Just our list.
Yes, we just needed to provide him with a priority, what we thought was a priority list, based off of...
Exactly.
I don't think that's...
I hadn't, I hadn't been done.
I don't think that's actually been done, or...
No, I, I mean, I have a list that, of items that was considered a priority for council, so I'm reorganizing my work schedule to address those priorities first.
Yeah, no, I don't...
We as a whole, we're going to prioritize them for you.
Yeah, you just got the individual, I mean, you just got the bullet points, that come from every, every angle, so...
No problem.
Yeah.
So that's on us to, we need to prioritize.
We need to do that, yes.
Happy to facilitate whatever you want to.
Then that may have been my fault, and I offered him the opportunity with me, council was a hole?
Yeah, not to go over his review, I, I, I think it, it, that was a miscommunication on our part, was it, I don't think anybody here wants to sit down, go over his review. I think we just wanna prioritize, okay, here's what we want to have done...
Here's our top ten list.
Yeah, here's our top ten list over the next sixty days, here's how we wanna...
That, that's not the way I presented it.
Okay, okay.
That would be the manager's fault, that would be my fault.
All right, then, I, I, I'm, I'm speaking for myself, I, I don't know about, I don't wanna speak for the rest of council, if I'm, if I'm misleading, then everybody needs to speak up and tell me, Dave, you're way off the mark here.
We discussed prioritizing.
Okay.
Report, okay, anything else?
I would like to say one thing, Mayor, and, and I, I think we, we have failed at this, when this whole thing come up with the water, John Bocherry was here that night, and he took a lot of flak for the state, but after that night, we haven't seen anybody here from the state level. We've now complied three years almost in a row with something that should've only taken us one year, and the state's pretty much hamstrung us, and, and a lot of it falls on us as the elected officials to not relay this information down to our elected officials in Columbus, and I, I, you know, I mean, we're, we're all taking a black eye for this, the manager took the bulk of it, of course, the operator is no longer here, we have no idea what the state's doing with that, I mean, he's on court, he's not on court, so I have no idea what they're really doing with that, but this has cost the taxpayers a hundred thousand dollars a year, so that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we get these orders rescinded halfway through this year, and, and I, I just, honestly, I just don't think it's, it's been fair to the taxpayers, I don't think it's been fair to us here at council, I mean, the director issued the orders and state of what it was, but he didn't even follow his own... follow his own orders. Now, not only have we paid, we've also paid for eight changes to be done to their corrosion control study because we're changing changes that they wanted made, and it should have never been made that way, I, I just.
And we're not out of changes yet?
No, we're not out of changes yet, they still haven't signed off on it, I, I just, I'm, quite honestly, I'm, I'm just very, very disappointed that the state has really pretty much hamstrung us over the last three years, and, and people have been drug around through the mud for no particular reason. I mean, this should have been taken care of in year number one when we met all the standards that they wanted us to meet, but the problem is we didn't push hard enough in the EPA, again, they really do not have anybody to report to, the governor cannot override them. They report to the US EPA and it's finally taken the US EPA to agree with what we found to finally get them to move off of center, and, and it's, it's, it's just a shame that the taxpayers have had to foot this bill.
I have a, just briefly, he hired attorney John Yuhas to represent him, as I think you all know, it came up for trial, and just a couple weeks prior to that, the judge was indicted and she hired John Yuhas for her counsel, so they had to bring in a visiting judge. She hadn't been indicted yet when she hired John, it was like in that week prior to her indictment, so they had to bring in a visiting judge, which probably wouldn't have been necessary if, if she had already resigned, and it set for jury trial.
When?
I, I don't think we do jury trials, we only, probably in October, could be in May, we only do them twice a year. And I can't remember who the visiting judge is, but.
Mr. Wright.
But anyhow, I mean, I.
I should let you know that Mr. Bocherry contacts me about every six weeks to two months, as a matter of fact, strange to mention that tonight because he was on my phone, my home phone this afternoon, talking to him.
And I haven't reached out to him, so I, I'm partly to blame for that, Mayor, I don't think we stressed the urgency, and again, I'm grateful that he come here that night and stood with us, because he very easily could have just run in tuck-tail like everybody else did, you know, I mean, it took us, the director showed up here and we didn't even know he was showing up, if you remember that meeting.
Yeah.
It was not supposed to be him.
Right.
And then all these people start coming over from Youngstown and saying, hey, yeah, the director's on his way up. Wow, I mean, yeah, it, it, it's just, it's just a sad day for the village that it's cost us well over a quarter of a million dollars in what should have cost us one year, our tests were all clean after we got the tests done the way they were supposed to be done, not the way they were being done. It's just, it's, it's, it's a shame, and I, and I have to say that I'm part of that problem, I, I guess I should have picked up the phone myself personally and leaned a little bit, but I don't know whether it would have made any difference or not, Mayor. I'm not pointing the finger at anybody, I'm not blaming anybody, it's just, it's, it's just a shame that it's taken us this long to clear up this mess that should have been very simply cleared up.
Well, I can tell you, a couple state representatives are frustrated as we are with it.
And they should be, I mean, they, they should be.
They see this, but I think the one said it was a complete abuse of power.
Well, absolutely it was.
Okay, anything else, other officials?
Good job.
Mr. Mayor.
Wright.
You, you want my report, then?
Yes, do you want to give your report now?
Okay, well, first thing, our last code enforcement officer kinda did look out for us on vacant properties because we have the vacant property thing with the bonds, and we're kinda trying to explore every way that we can to get money to alleviate some of the problems and the trash and whatever, and I, I, I don't know if the new code enforcement officer has been told that when he's out and about, and even the PD, I know we talked to Chief Heverly about this a lot, but not Chief Harris, that to report back any vacant properties, rentals, commercial properties in particular because they have to post a higher bond, so might wanna let whoever know that because I don't see that person. I didn't get the report that Chief Harris evidently gave you on the 126 East Oregon, and I would like to have that because I was told to, to deal with these properties and do as much as I possibly could, and, and I played phone tag with Mr. Shany, fortunately, because had I gotten through to him, I'd have looked kinda stupid not knowing this information, so if I can get that report, that would be helpful. The other issues with the, the building, the, what they call those orders.
Judication.
Judication orders, do you want to discuss those in executive session since it is potential litigation?
That would be your recommendation.
It would be.
Okay. At the end of council? At the end of council?
Yeah, and the manager.
No, no action?
No action.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm bringing them.
Anything else?
No.
Mayor, I did have one comment, I guess. If we are going to have the code enforcement looking at that, please don't send out any letters until we're for sure that the property is actually a vacant property, because Teresa will be getting lots of phone calls and lots of office stops. If you remember the last time we tried this, it didn't fare so well for us, we sent out a lot of letters that shouldn't have gone out, so.
Yeah, some of them are just so blatantly obvious.
Yeah, the obvious ones are the obvious ones, Chief, so I, I just don't want that guy to fall in the same, same death trap the other guy did.
Those that have a for sale sign and another vacant, those are exempt.
They still have to come in and ask for the exemption, I think there's a form they fill out to get the exemption.
Well, I mean, the purposes of Officer Kelln going around and checking, if it's vacant and has a for sale sign on it, they still need to send that in, but it's technically exempt property under regulations.
And that's something Mabel will be working on, Rick, correct, as, as we move past the taxis and that's, that's gonna be one of her job functions, so that should be handed off to code enforcement so that they have a running copy of what actually is vacant, and I, I mean, he could also look at that as he's, he's out there, too.
On that posting of the bond and stuff, if you're, I guess I should have checked that myself, I was under the impression that that was only on foreclosures, not.
I don't recall specifically because it's been so long what, what the criteria are.
It's not a bond, it's only a fee they have to pay, and it's $100 for residential's, 250 for commercial, and 250 for industrial, and it's based off of ordinance 33-13. I did get the copies of information from Mabel today because that's what I was questioning, you know, why we hadn't really did anything with 616 because it's classified a vacant property, but there's no forms filled out, we haven't built it, the $100 and that type of stuff. Basically, what I was looking for was a loophole that really wasn't there because it's not connected to that bond. That bond is only for the, it's not really a bond, it's, it's just a registry.
Putting $10,000 on.
Is based on the foreclosure, yes, absolutely.
That's right.
I thought it was for vacant though also, I thought it was vacant foreclosed.
I thought it was.
And rental.
I thought the 10K bond was for vacant properties.
Yes. The foreclosure is, is the 10,000 cash bond required, that's the only one that's required on.
But they're still required on vacant properties, correct?
To pay $100, remember you asked me what that fee was, it's $100 for residential and 250 and 250 for commercial and industrial, but if it's foreclosure, then they have to post that $10,000 bond.
And they, there is still a form they can fill out because if a house has been for sale for, and if any other houses out there have been for sale forever, they don't necessarily get that waiver, it's, it's a request, but it's not automatic.
Right.
And motivate these people to sell their properties.
Okay, anything else? Okay, ordinances and resolutions.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Under ordinance and resolutions, I have the motion to read 04-2018 and 09-2018, 10-2018 and 11-2018 by title only.
Second.
Sorry.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Phillips to read ordinance 04-2018 by title only and resolutions 09, 10, 11 by ordinance only. Questions or comments? Hearing no per call or roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Count.
Yes. Ordinance passes with the emergency clause. Okay, resolution 09-2018, this, this comes from Finance Committee, Councilmember Hart. This is an ordinance authorizing and directing the municipal manager to decertify water and sewer counts previously certified to Mahoning County Auditor for Collection. Council having heard the ordinance read by title only with the emergency clause, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion, will you adopt the ordinance as read with the emergency clause?
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Phillips to adopt as presented with the emergency clause. Questions or comments?
Mayor, in a nutshell, we reviewed it with our reports, that this is gonna be an additional $25,000, but it will be for the betterment of the roadway and give it a, hopefully a longer life on the road.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Per call or roll?
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Count.
Yes. Ordinance passes with the emergency clause. Okay, resolution 09-2018, this, this comes from Finance Committee, Councilmember Hart. This is a resolution directing municipal manager to decertify water and sewer counts previously certified to Mahoning County Auditor for Collection. Council having heard the resolution read by title only, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion, will you adopt the resolution as read?
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by somebody under flowers.
Yeah, I was leaving it up.
Adopt as presented. Questions or comments?
Mayor, any questions or comments, this is to, according to our support of council, this is to tidy up our books, get it off the records because of the land bank.
Well, Mr. Hart, we got a supplement for the, to get it off our books, uncollectibles, it's not all the same ones, I don't believe.
It's the same properties, but we have to decertify them.
We gotta decertify this one first.
Decertify.
This is just to decertify.
These are properties that the land bank's going to take down, that's why we're, that's why we're taking that all there yet, or they've already taken it down.
Any other questions or comments? The properties were 846 North 15th Street, 125 East Pennsylvania, and 346 East Vermont.
Yes.
Hearing no other comments, per call or roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Count.
Yes. Resolution passes as read. This is resolution 11-2018, Finance Committee, Councilmember Hart, this is a resolution declaring certain weed, weed and grass removal charges that's uncollectible. Council having heard the resolution read by title only, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to adopt the resolution as read.
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Phillips, questions or comments? Same three properties.
Same.
Hearing no per call or roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Count.
Resolution passes as read. Citizens' comments, last call for citizens' comments. Any other business to come before council? In regard to the solicitor's request to enter executive session on a litigation matter, which council's pleasure?
Mayor, make a motion to go into executive session with all of council, mayor, manager for litigation.
Second.
Motion by Hart, seconded by Wright, enter executive session.
Did say solicitor.
To discuss with the solicitor a litigation issue. Questions or comments? Any business to be transacted afterwards? No, no business will be transacted afterwards, except a German. Hearing no per call or roll.
Phillips.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Flowers.
Aye.
Avery.
Aye.
Count.
Counsel, we are in executive session. Excuse us.